This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, September the 16th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Tom Hurd, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Oh God, you have bound us together in a common life. Help us in the midst of our struggles for justice and truth to confront one another without hatred or bitterness and to work together with mutual forbearance and respect. And as always, we ask your blessing upon all your children as we bless and magnify your holy name. Amen.
I want to ask everyone to please remain standing for a moment of silence for a longtime servant and sexual ban member of Frank Punkinette, just a moment of silence.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate position. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk Office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk Office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes from August the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Proportional move in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
Good mornings. Good to see you. Thanks for taking time to come join us today. Several announcements and a couple of presentations today. The first announcement is just to remind you that Airbus is their 10th anniversary. It's hard to believe that it was 10 years ago that we had the ribbon cutting, but anyway, when you think about their impact, they started off with 300 employees 10 years ago and they have over 2,000 today. And they're more in the pipeline as they continue to ramp up their production. You know, the final assembly lines were referred to as fouls. We built a foul the first time. Now we're completing actually almost complete construction of the third foul, which will increase the production further from where it is today. During that period of time, we've had more than 30 suppliers have opened businesses in Mobile to support those Airbus operations. I would say that their success is hard work, collaboration, and answers to prayers. And when I say collaboration, that means with the city, the county, the state, and federal partners. So we're tremendously grateful for the participation in their success. As you've heard us say before, Airbus is poised, or Mobile is poised, to be the fourth-largest producer of commercial aircraft in the world sometime within the next few years, which is really an amazing feat. When you think about 10 years ago, we had not even built an airplane. It's not, to me, it's not just a testament of the workforce that we have here in Mobile, but it's also Airbus's leadership. So once again, congratulations to them. Thank them for what they've done. I think it's proven that they are here to stay. They are invested in Mobile and they want to make sure that we continue to move forward. And I wish them the very best in the next 10 years. Another note, our Parks and Rec Department continues to host what we call the Stream Events. And Stream is like STEM, except it's science, technology, recreation, engineering, art, and math. So we have what we call Stream Saturdays, where we engage young Mobileans aged 5 to 13 with funds, hand-on learning. This Saturday's event is about the science of flight, which I think is pertinent to what's going on with Airbus. So Saturday, September 20th, the children are invited to learn about planes, helicopters, and rockets, fly and build and test their own flying machines. It's from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Seals Community Center. It's free to attend, but space is limited. To find out more information and find the links to register by visiting the Mobile Parks and Rec Department Facebook page or our Parks and Rec website. I want to commend the Mobile Parks and Rec Department for what they've done for our young people for these stream programs. It's certainly having an impact in keeping them on the leading edge and hopefully whetting their appetite for what could possibly be a very bright future for them. For those who have driven around downtown, you'll see the evidence of what we're calling the Street Optimization Program, where we are enhancing the traffic flow, where we're changing the traffic flow on several of the streets and many of the streets, removing a lot of the unnecessary traffic signals. We are resurfacing, restriping, and converting from one-way to two-way traffic. There'll be eight streets total, four fully converted and four partially converted. What we have, the hope there is that we'll use yield-flow traffic model where vehicles move in both directions without removing existing on-street parking. The idea is to slow the traffic down and really two-way traffic and cars parked on the street tend to slow the traffic down, which makes it better for pedestrian foot track as they're crossing the streets. Other conversions will actually begin next week with Warren Street and Dearborn Street will be the first two. And the striping and signage work will take place at night to reduce confusion. You can find out more information from the CityMobile.org website. And hurricane season, we're very fortunate so far, but we can now say that Mobile is officially storm-ready, according to the National Weather Service. Voluntary storm-ready initiative helps the communities to ensure they're prepared for severe weather like hurricanes and even more. Mobile is storm-ready due to the hard work from our Public Safety Department, the Office of Resilience, and coordination between all of our city departments. As you know, as a coastal community, being prepared for severe weather is critical. And I'm proud to, that the city's commitment to this priority. This time, I'll call up Rob Lasky and Jason Beaman from the National Weather Service in the Pensacola area to make some remarks about being storm-ready.
Good morning. Mayor Stimson, Director Lasky, members of the council. My name is Jason Beaman. I'm the meteorologist in charge of the National Weather Service here in Mobile. It's a great honor to be here today to formally recognize the city as a storm-ready community, only the second in the state of Alabama to achieve this distinction. This designation just isn't a title. It's a testament to the city's commitments of public safety. It signifies the city has taken all the necessary steps to be as prepared as possible for hazardous weather events, from hurricanes, tornadoes, to flash floods, and on the rare occasion, even eight inches of snow. Some of the storm-ready requirements include having more than one way to receive weather warnings, promoting the importance of public readiness, and developing a formal hazardous weather plan, which includes conducting emergency exercises. This achievement is a result of dedicated effort and collaboration, and I want to extend a special thank you to Director Lasky, Mobile Public Safety, the Office of Resilience. Your team's hard work, commitment, and partnership with us and the National Weather Service have been crucial in meeting the rigorous criteria for this designation. Congratulations to you all at the City of Mobile. Thank you.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Lance Slater and Madeline Dobson, who worked very hard on this, as well as all the individual departments throughout the City of Mobile, because this is truly, it was a team effort. Every department contributed to get to this stage. And let's knock on wood, we don't have a storm, but if we do, we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I'd also make a comment to the citizens that are here. You know, if you think back about the Fire Department becoming ISO-1, city and other accreditations that we have, and this most recent recognition is the commitment that we've made to trying to make sure that our personnel are on the leading edge of all the training that is available. And so the hope for is, is that when we have these events, that we will be performing at, you know, peak capacity. So those are the kind of things, when a storm comes, you hope that you don't have it. But I feel better today based on this recognition that we're better prepared than we've ever been should we have one. This time, I call on Chief Jackson to present the Officer of the Month.
Morning, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you, staff, council. Thank you for having us here today. With me today is Detective Officer Ethan Tuberville. He's only been here for a couple of years. He's extremely eager to learn. He's doing very well. He's already just recently moved into Investigations at the Second Precinct, General Investigations. In August, he had a number of significant cases, but what's most important was he recovered nearly $18,000 of stolen property, which were tools, weapons, vehicles, et cetera. And we were able to return these items back to the citizens who were violated, which is an extremely good thing that we can do. He had 11 felonies and one misdemeanor, but his cases are still ongoing, so those numbers are still climbing. As you can see, he just put a case file down here because he's got to leave here and go across the way for another case. But most significantly, his clearance rate, each detective out there gets assigned over 40 cases a month, sometimes over 50. His clearance rate was 32.1%, and the national average is less than 16%. So for that, he's our Officer of the Month for August 25.
Congratulations to you, man.
At this time, Chief Liston will present the Firefighter of the Month.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today, we bring firefighter Enrique Bush. That's the August Firefighter of the Month. One of the things that he has done as outstanding is the amount of training that he does in preparation to be number-one at his job. It's the amount of skill and the amount of training that he has committed to the city and also training other members of our department when they get detailed to his station. Just the extra training alone on top of the 220 hours that we require every year, he did 130 hours extra that was generally outside of the state, going to different conferences and things like that, that he paid for himself, just to get better prepared to do his job to protect the citizens of Mobile. He is selfish when it comes to doing this job and making sure that he is trained and prepared to answer the fire calls at any moment in time. So today, we appreciate Enrique Bush for his service to the city and Firefighter of the Month.
And congratulations to you, man.
Karen Pope, the Director of the National Maritime Museum, please join me, you and your team. So we have a proclamation which reads, "Whereas on this day, we commemorate a full decade since the open of the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf, affectionately known as Gulf Quest, a beacon of education, exploration, and celebration of our region's maritime heritage. Whereas since its grand opening on September 26, 2015, the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf has welcomed visitors from across the nation and around the world, offering immersive exhibits, hands-on learning experiences, and breathtaking views of the working waterfront of Mobile. And whereas the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf continues to ignite curiosity and inspire future generations through school programs, family events, rotating exhibits, and partnerships with educators, historians, and maritime professionals. And whereas the dedicated staff, volunteers, and supporters of the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf have made possible 10 years of maritime discovery, community engagement, and cultural enrichment, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim and celebrate the 10th anniversary of the National Maritime Museum of the Gulf, honoring its contributions to education, tourism, and preservation of maritime history, and expressing our deepest gratitude to all who have supported this institution, to all who are piloting her into a bright future. Congratulations."
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the council and the mayor and all you sitting there for all the support that you've given us in the last two years. We are well on our way to becoming the institution that we always wanted to be, and we couldn't have done it without you. We are going to celebrate our birthday for the whole year, starting on the 27th of September, with a family fun day, free admission for everybody. So it's going to be a big day, lots of fun stuff going on, so please come. And our birthday will end next September as we open the Jimmy Buffett exhibit, which we hope is going to be really great for the whole city, not just for us. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. I have to talk longer. So the mayor reminded me, so we really are kind of headed in the right direction. Our attendance is up by 35% year-over-year today. Our event, Rentals, is up by 120% year-over-year to date. Our field trips are up by about 35%, and we're on track for those to be up way higher for the next year. And our money is up by, has doubled since this time last year. So we are really headed in the right direction. Jimmy Buffett is going to do great things for us and for the waterfront especially. That also includes a statue that the city is paying to put on the riverfront. And then in addition to that, we did receive a $2.25 million grant from GOMESA last year that we will be using for the Delta exhibit. That will be the whole, the whole third floor of our museum, and will offer great opportunities for K-12 kids to come and learn about the most biodiverse area in the country. So lots of great stuff going on, so please come visit. And again, I just thank you all.
Thank you.
So I'd ask Frank Hawkins to please join me at the podium. Okay, we have a proclamation, a retirement proclamation for Frank Hawkins. Whereas Goodwill Gulf Coast, which is headquartered in Mobile, serves 10 counties along the Gulf Coast in Alabama and Florida as a leading nonprofit provider of services for people with disabilities and others in need. And whereas Frank Hawkins, following 50 years of dedicated service leading nonprofit organizations, including 46 years as the head of the Mobile Chapter of Alabama Easter Seals and Goodwill Gulf Coast, will retire as president and CEO in October. And whereas through Hawkins' leadership, Goodwill Gulf Coast grew substantially, expanding its programs, services, and retail operations across South Alabama and Northwest Florida, and moving from a historical mission of providing vocational rehabilitation services and medical equipment assistance to address more community needs, including early childhood intervention, an exclusive daycare center, English language and literacy programs, GED training and testing, youth at-risk measures, an autism evaluation clinic, an adult day program for individuals with intellectual disabilities. And whereas Hawkins' unwavering dedication and service have improved countless lives and helped build more supportive, inclusive communities, an impact that will continue to resonate through the outstanding nonprofit organization he helped build and the many lives he has touched over the years, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim September 30th as 2025 is Frank Hawkins' Day in the City of Mobile. And Frank, I also have an exceptional citizenship medal that I'd like to present you with, and I feel like that it's probably inadequate for all that you've done. And for those that saw me speak to him when he came up here, I said, Frank, how could you have worked here for 46 years when you don't look a day over 50? Congratulations, Frank. So we can have a chance to make a few remarks to this. Oh, oh, thought about that. There we go. My bad.
Thank you, Sandy, Mayor. Deeply respect you and the job you've done as mayor, and your tenure has been magnificent. I appreciate your daily emails, and I love the last part of your email every time. Thank you so much. Thank you for your servant leadership. The council members have had the pleasure of working with y'all for 50 years. So it's been a joy. This is a great community. I came here when I was 27 years old, and Russell Ladd and Frank Lott welcomed me into Mobile. I'm a country boy. I was from Childersburg, and this was like New York City to me. It's now where my wife and our five kids and our 13 grandchildren call home. And Mobile is special to us. I'm blessed to have with us today some of my family and coworkers and some board members with us today. And my career is just the collaboration of working with other people that have lifted each other up, helping with a focus on helping people who need help. Goodwill accepts people for who they are and where they are and tries to work with them to carve out a pathway to become that person that God created them to be. So we've had a magnificent time doing that and a joyful time, and we're very grateful for that. I will say it's been a collaboration the whole time. In the nonprofit world in our community here, it's such a good, supportive group of people that help each other. And it's just, it's just a testimony of the beauty of this city, how we will help each other in times of need. And in our life cycle, we're all in that helper mode and helping mode. And Goodwill has been, I've been blessed to be a part of that. Started in 1956 here, but Goodwill Nationally started in 1902, so we're almost 123 years old. And it was founded by Methodist minister who wanted to give people a hand up, not a handout, to help them become that person that God had created them to be. And he issued a challenge near the end of his life, and he said, "Friends of Goodwill, be dissatisfied with your work until every person in your community has an opportunity to live a useful life and abundant life." And that's what we do in this community. That's not just a Goodwill thing. That's a Mobile thing. And I'll end by saying I had the best mom and dad in the world, and they encouraged me to start every day with gratitude and to treat every person we meet with love, with dignity, and with respect. So thank you. So Frank Hawkins, today, don't treat everybody with love, dignity, and respect. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
Frank, I would just like to thank you for all of your many, many years working, laboring in the vineyards, laboring in the vineyards for the citizens of Mobile. We are, with the City of Mobile, have been truly blessed to have you here for 50 years. Thank you very much.
Mr. President. Mr. Woods.
Mr. Hawkins, I just want to say thank you and really honestly, the impact that you had in the community has been amazing, and it's attributed to who you are as a person and individual, but also too, the impact that you've had in the nonprofit world. You're the, you're the, you're the model that leaders of nonprofits try to mimic and follow. So thank you for that impact that you've had across all the nonprofit scenario as well. And congratulations on your retirement.
Congratulations.
My remarks? I just want to remind the ordinance that this is a city council business meeting. Please stop the sidebar conversations. If I hit this gavel, I will be suspending you for 30 days, okay? Again, this is a business meeting for the city council. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
A move. Back up. Proportional move in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? General's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave-the-noise ordinance on November 1st at the Brad Mitchell Mansion, October 18th in Mardi Gras Park, October 31st on Elmira Street, December 31st on Government Street, March 28th in Cathedral Square, and October 11th on Venecia Road.
So moved. Back up. Proportional move in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to declare the structures at 1109 Adams Street, 313 Calhoun Street, 1205 Gent Street, and 1966 Halls Mill Road. Public nuisances in order, then demolished.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Today is a public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structures at 33 East I-65 Service Road, 1720 Northview Drive, 1220 Satchel Street.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? It's something I come down to the podium by stating your name.
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Renee Cade. I'm the property owner of 1720 Northview Drive. Presented a letter through the mail regarding the proposed amount. And I have some questions regarding the scope of work. I've tried to contact several different departments to get some information regarding what the scope of work was to be performed at this location. scope of work was to be performed at this location and failed to receive that information. I feel at this point, some of the work has not been complete. So, that's, I'm kind of trying to get that information.
See the gentleman that's in the rear, right behind you, Mr. David? Right behind you?
Okay.
Yeah, he can be able to go with everything with you and answer all your questions there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, at this point, would I need to ask for continuance on this?
Yeah, this is, the work has already been done, so we are just, right now, we're just fixing the costs on this item.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, he would be able to?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Jabaria Dent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I spoke last week, and, I'm sorry, Jabaria Dent, with Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama. And so, this is really just a continuation of my last week with you guys. I just wanted to talk to you about our Bridges to Great Futures program. Many of you have heard that middle school is the most developmentally critical time in the life of a child. At ages 11 to 13, students face not only new academic expectations, they have shifting family structures and heightened peer and social pressures. And the result is what educators like myself often call the middle school or the sixth grade cliff. We see a sharp drop in attendance, academic performance, and engagement that oftentimes predict long-term outcomes in high school and beyond. The Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama has designed a program called Bridges to Great Futures that directly addresses this particular challenge. Beginning the summer before middle school, we offer to provide 256 hours of programming that will prepare sixth graders for success. We then want to support them for three years of middle school, and we propose launching it at six sites that cross our city and touch just about every one of your districts. Booker T. Washington, Cranford Burns Middle School, Palmer Pillins Middle School, Grand Bay, Williamson Academy, and Whitley Elementary, Mobile County Training Schools. This program will allow us to serve up to an additional 480 students annually because each site has a capacity to serve up to 80 students per year. Academically, if we combine the summer and the academic year, we're providing 780 hours of support in out-of-school time for these kids. And the outcomes are clear. Club members typically have better attendance, they participate more in school, and they have less suspensions and report As and Bs in high school. So, just in my last minute, I want to give you some numbers to think about. According to the Justice Policy Institute in the state of Alabama, it costs approximately $161,000 to incarcerate a young person for the course of a year. Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama with this program can do it for $4,725. So, we can either spend $160,000 locking up children, or we can invest $5,000 to help support them and create a bright future for their success. Additionally, for every dollar you invest in our program, is a $14 return in your investment in the form of high school graduation rates, reduced teen pregnancy rates, and post-secondary education and credentialing and certification attainment. Our goal is to serve our kids and provide them a great future. No other organization in Mobile has our track record. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dent. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Lindsey Blankenship.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lindsey Blankenship, and I'm here this morning to spend a few minutes talking to you about charitable organizations started by probably my favorite Mobilean, Dr. Sonia White. She's a dentist here in Mobile, and her passion project is Dedicated Dentist, Inc. And she recognized in the course of her own charitable efforts and her practice as a dentist that we only have in Alabama 41.6 dentists per 100,000 residents. That's not enough. But we also, as all of y'all already know, have a poverty level that's in excess of 15% in this state, which is like the second worst in the country. Those two things together combine to make for a lot of people who are missing out on oral health care. Failure to take care of your teeth leads to strokes, cancer, diabetes, and all other, lots of other kinds of health issues that we'd like to address because we're looking for not race, not gender, not politics, but the human in humanity. And Dedicated Dentists to that end hosts a free dental day for all residents of the Mobile area and beyond, if we can raise the money, for a free dental day where you can receive dental services that are either a filling, an extraction, or just getting your teeth cleaned. For example, up to 70% of women during pregnancy experience a pregnancy-related condition called pregnancy gingivitis. And pregnancy gingivitis and regular gingivitis has an increased stroke rate, which, you know, all that sounds bad, right? So, last year, we participated with 14 dentists, two doctors, 24 nurses, 12 dental assistants. Is that it?
Yeah, one more minute.
Cool. We basically provided about $54,000 worth of services to 100 members of the Mobile community. Last year and again this year, our county commissioners, Ludgood and Hudson, were kind enough to donate about $5,000 to our organization, but we're about $10,000 short. This morning, somebody asked me how much money I was going to ask for, and I said, you know what? I'm asking $10,000. So, I'm here to ask you for some money, some port, some support. Y'all also have flyers in front of you. Please spread the word. We don't ask you who you are. We just want to take care of you. It's going to be October 11th at Dr. White's office, the White Smile Center, and we hope to see you all there. Either volunteer, give money, or just show up. Thank you.
Ms. Blankenship, thank you so much for coming down this morning and spreading this important news. Is it possible that you can send us a PDF form to our city clerk office, and each one of we can share in our newsletter?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And we'll try to get the word out for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Y'all have a great week. Thank you.
Sabrina Mas.
Sabrina Mas. So, I'm here today to talk about the elections. And first, I want to say that we're all here, even sitting Prime supporters, and we followed him all the way from the investigation through the election. So, we stand here proud to say that we still support Prime. We are a family. So, this is the thing about elections. All over the blogs, Fox 10 News, Typical Mobilean, people's personal pages, what have you, since the election, there has been an uproar about the mistrust in the election process. And there is a mistrust in the election process because too many things were happening that was not functional, it was dysfunctional. I, for one, was at one of the schools, and others, we all were at different schools, and people were being turned away by the hundreds, saying they were at the wrong precincts to vote. Some of them were turned away two or three times, even after they went to other precincts. Because when they went to one precinct, they say, this is your precinct. Then they get there, and it was another. So, some of them just forgot about it and didn't even vote. It's a chaotic mess with the world of technology, newspapers, Latin America stepping out news of free newspapers. Why wouldn't they put, why wasn't this put in the newspapers, free to the public? You got social media, you got news outlets, you report everything else on the news. Those are critical things that should have been reported and saying, this is what you do. This should have started two years ago after you guys did the annexation and the redistricting. It shouldn't have been waited till the last minute because some people, there are elderly people, disabled people, many people, college students, there's many people that get much mail, and some of them may look through the mail, some of them may not. Some of them probably didn't even get it. I don't know. But it was chaotic. Then we talked about a thing about public safety because it was at a church, okay? So, if it's public safety, why were the schools open for these elections? Because clearly, we were at the schools, and there were traffic jams. Two children almost got ran over. An elderly man on a walker almost got ran over in the middle of the chaotic traffic there before school and after. It was a chaotic mess. So, if it's public safety, why weren't the schools shut down? Because the most important commodity that we have in our lives are our children. So, they were at risk. So, that is a lie. I don't believe that public safety was the issue with this thing being moved. I just don't believe it. And then again, why was it that this administration was called on to do public safety when clearly there was an issue with Prime and Reggie Hill? They were on the ticket. You can't be trusted. So, why didn't you get the sheriff or the state to come in and go to these precincts so we can know it was a fair election process? Because clearly, three people, I can't say whether they saw it or not, said they saw Laskin Barber. Atheists are hard on these elections.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If anybody have any problems with any type of election process, just go across the hall and file a lawsuit. Madam Clerk? You, like, you're welcome if you care to.
Eva Lee regarding 211149.
Wow. Hey, y'all. I'm in my 70s. My name is Eva Lee, and I rent a studio flat in the Daytona Square Hysterical District. I retired here last October because I can't think of no other place I'd rather spend my golden years than in the city I love very much, Mobile. Now comes a mayoral election, and we have people saying that my one and only means of transportation, I surf the wave, I'm Dora the Explorer. And it takes me everywhere I need to go because a couple of years ago, my vision started failing, and I gave up driving. I didn't want to be like my 90-something-year-old grandpa and be dragged out of a ditch repeatedly by the local popo until they finally made him stop driving. So, I use the bus. And good news, I've used everything from this when I was a runaway in my teens to subways in Washington, DC, and in New York City, to Greyhound to get me back and forth between states. I've been a traveler all my life. And in the military, I traveled on a bus in South Korea. And if you think these buses are bad, take yourself back in a year or two to South Korea and get on one of those buses. Real challenge. I've ridden the trolleys in New Orleans, and y'all have got a great public transit system here. I absolutely love it. The drivers are professional, they're all compassionate, they take care of their passengers, even the ones who are problematic, like some of the homeless who get on there and want to argue with them. If it needs improvement, let's do it. I have a possible solution. Anything and everything, and anybody and everybody can use improvement. So, if y'all want to improve the buses, why don't you contact Zoom Meet Duo, whatever it is y'all do? You don't have to go up there, but get in touch with the CEO of the Akron, Ohio Metro RTA. The woman's name is Dawn Distler. She's got 35 years' experience in public transit. She's the CEO of the company now, okay? She started out as a driver. Get ahold of her and ask her how she went in 2024 to over 5,340,000 riders, which averages out to about 17,600 per weekday. Get in touch with her and ask her how she did it and see what y'all can do, okay? Because I don't want to be crowded into a van with four or five other mouth breathers who might give me RSV. I'm an old person. Give me a break. And I need to get to the VA clinic, so don't take my bus away from me. I can ride a bike, and I'm going to, but don't make me ride it all the way to the VA clinic for my health care, y'all. Take care of the wave, and let's keep it. Improve it. Put some hybrid vehicles in there, some electric vehicles in there. And these van people, make sure that they are trained as drivers, not just picked off the street and given a job. Thanks for letting me have a say.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pan.
Just want to let you know, you will still have a bus, ma'am. No one taking the buses away. All right.
We could use more help.
Okay. We're working on that as well. Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Denise Martin. Oh, I'm sorry. 211149.
And just a reminder, all electronic devices, including cell phones, please put on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position, please, at this time.
I say good morning to the mayor, good morning to everyone. I come as a person that do ride the wave, do ride the wave, and I use it for this.
Give your name. Your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Denise Martin, and I'm coming as one of the riders that do ride the wave as well as others. I told others about today, but I'm the only one came, and I've been before y'all many times before because one of the things I brought that I have showed y'all in the past with a petition list and saying, "Help us. Don't handicap us." This is something I have brought down here on a poster with a list of names. A lot of our drivers, a lot of them have quit, and some routes they're in cut because yesterday I was at Mobile Inferment visiting someone. And when I got ready to leave, like the spring here come there, the first spring here came, it was going out, and I wanted to get back downtown and waited for the second spring here. It did not show, so I got on the phone and called the office and asked, "Where is the spring here to take you to town? We are sorry. We are short of route. We are sending someone to get you." I said, "Well, it's not only me, it's four other people who trying to get downtown and can't." But what I'm trying to say, we as riders, it's making it harder on us. And like the lady said before me, that the Mogo or whatever that is, I wouldn't want to be dr- crowded up in a car trying to go here. You got to take someone this to this area. I got to wait and go, and he take me another area. When our buses, if you be at the right location, you can get to where you trying to go without having to ride around the world before you can get where you want to, because you should be. I go to doctor, I go do most of my business on the foot, and I know just how much we need them bad, but now that we have lost a lot of drivers, or they quit because of finance-wise at being paid, we need y'all to come together and work together for the peoples of the city. And because God say, when we come together and work together, He'll bless us. For long as one pulling one weight and other are either don't have concern for each other, you make it harder on us that depend on them. Like I told one in the past, we need y'all, and y'all need us. So, it's a two-way thing, but we should work together, and God will smile on us. But long as some of us suffer, God say, "What you do unto the least one, you do it unto me." So, we need to come together as a family of children of God and work together, and what you can do to help me, do that, and God will bless you. And what I can do to help you, I do that, and God will bless you. Because like I said yesterday, I called in not just for me, but for the other ones that were wanting to get to their destination.
Yeah.
God bless you all.
Thank you so much for coming down. Madam Clerk?
Albert Abrams regarding 211149.
Good morning, City Council, Mayor. My name is Albert Abrams. I am a WAVE employee. I've been at WAVE for five years now, and I don't know really where y'all are with the new contract.
Speak up a little bit louder for us.
Okay. I don't really know. My name's Albert Abrams. I'm a WAVE employee, been there for five years. I don't really know where y'all are with the new contract with the company. I guess it's VIA who's been appointed. But I just ask that the mayor and the city councilmen really take consideration and compassion to the company, the employees, and the passengers, the riders that know need the transportation to get to schoolwork and to doctor's departments and other various events. And really, the contract itself. And really the contract itself, you know, we ask that you don't take any of the employees' sick time, personal time, pension, insurance and benefits that's in the contract. Maybe it should be a better idea maybe for the next administration to probably appoint some, a company or whatnot to that area. Because we don't want any of that, we don't want to lose any of our stuff like our insurance and benefits because that would cripple, you know, employees as myself and the company and the riders, two of you change stuff like to the vans and stuff. But it's just going to be a inconvenience. So we just ask that, you know, the mayor and the city council, y'all just take consideration and compassion towards all of us as, you know, the drivers and the passengers and the company itself. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming down. Let me ask you a question. Are you part of the union or you not part of the union?
I am, I'm a union employee, I am.
So let me ask you the question. And have your union rep, have he not discussed these things with you all or, or you just want to hear from the city or what?
He, he has, he has. I, I just wanted to come in myself and just get a better understanding and, you know, just voice my concerns as well. On it, but yeah, he has. But like I say, we're still in the midst of it with the, you know, the contract and the, all this changes and everything. So.
Okay. Mr. Snowden or either Mr. Collins, can you just give us just a short overview of some of his concerns? If you can just address it in a short form and everything and just also for the public would know at the same time, you know? Thank you so much for coming, they'll address it.
Yes, sir, I certainly can. So. Yes, sir, I certainly can. So the VIA representatives are here today. Their plan is to follow up their meetings again with the employees, starting at the close of this meeting. I believe there were several meetings that taken place with individual employees along with union representatives. And they are prepared to continue those conversations immediately this afternoon following that. We appreciate Mr. Abrams coming down. Every concern that he's expressed has also been expressed by the VIA representatives. So it appears that the, the work that's taking place meets the needs and concerns that have been expressed. We look forward to getting that done.
Let me ask you a question and you can stay up there, you can just say yes or no. Have you talked to a VIA representative yet or? Just get a little bit closer to the mic, just for the public to hear.
We hadn't really talked in depth, but I've, I've met a per, you know, I've met one of the representatives yesterday, I have.
Okay. Well, from what I got from Mr. Collins, that after this meeting, if this was the past day, that they will talk to each one of y'all and everything. If I'm correct, Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir, and they're here today. If Mr. Abrams can stay after this meeting, that he can be, well, the first one that they speak to. We have two of the representatives here in the room right now.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pan?
Just want to clarify so the public understand exactly what's going on. One, from what I have perceived, they will have insurance. They will, correct, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
They will not lose their sick days from, that they will be paid for their sick days.
That's correct.
They, so the, so the public understands they're not lo, you're not losing your sick days, you will be paid for your sick days. So, and you will have insurance. Any vacation time that you already have put in, you also, they will verify that you will have that vacation time put in as well.
That's correct, all those dates will be honored.
So I just want the public to understand those things are, are in effect. And so hopefully that answered your question. All right, so I don't know if that, if that's the information you was looking for. All right, all right, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill regarding twenty-one eleven forty-nine, zero nine eleven sixty-nine and zero nine eleven seventy.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Greetings, Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations regarding city business. I'll pick back up where we just left off with the, the transit system. It's, it's good to hear that these measures are being added in. However, there's still a little skepticism, even though seeing that we seem to be downsizing what our efforts are going to be, but we're increasing the amount of money that we're going to add to this by two million dollars. There's been a lot of fuss over the past several weeks about the amount of money that we've been spending on transit. But it seems again, that we're going to downsize the service and increase the amount of money that we give towards it. So I want us to be very, very observant of that because it doesn't appear to be a prudent use of the taxpayer dollars. But thank you for those efforts made to ensure that the service here might be something that is beneficial to the people that work there. Let's look please at the, at this budget. I want to make this correction. Last week, someone mentioned that we did not budget for the idea of taxing citizens through citations. Whereas the fiscal year twenty-five adopted budget with revenue, excuse me, there was six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars adopted, meaning approved, for towing and storage, four hundred thousand dollars for police fines. And then one million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars totaling for total fines and forfeitures under public safety. Now, some of y'all may come down here and just say anything, but that's not something that I do. So I want to make sure that that's very clear on the record. As well, we noticed that yesterday there was a debate. And the reason why I want to mention this is so we can have a little civics lesson here regarding the ZIBI Act and how it works. The administration proposes a budget. And so we're about to approach a runoff election. While we may not know where that's going to lead us, there may be some other investigations to come about. Because we're seeing that there was some mishandling with this process a few weeks ago, as has been stated today. But, but if they're proposing it, again, as I mentioned that I mentioned last week, what is in this budget is not reflective of what they want to do. And then as well, we know with three pending court matters, it's not necessarily solid how this decision will be made up here. But one thing that was neutral yesterday that I was listening to when these two potential administrators were speaking, storm water management, housing and violence prevention. We have not spent enough on these three, these three items. So I believe that this is something that we need to be concentrating on before we spend a taxpayer dollars. Again, last week I proposed there's twenty million additional dollars with the C I P plan. We should have that spread across districts one through three, which need a lot more need. And you can keep the four million dollars in districts four through seven. We have a housing crisis in the city of Mobile. There's no increase in the spending that we're doing towards it, other than projects that are already on the books. And with the youth violence prevention, we need to take away this nine million dollars that we have an increase for public safety and actually put it towards a proactive approach, towards initiatives that actually work. And I think that we can curtail the issues that we're seeing in the community. We don't need to charge citizens to utilize these parks and recreational centers. We need more small business incentives. I'd like to see an increased performance contract as well discretionary spending to these seven districts and an increased police training. Thank you for you on the floor.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pan?
I thank Mr. President. Clearly you do say stuff that's not true. Because when you first started, you said we're downsizing and clearly we're not doing it. If you go back, federal law says we can't do that. Federal law says we can't do it. So how can we do that? You clearly come down here and say things that are not true. And that's not right. Federal law says we can't do that. So how can we downsize when federal law, you can take a seat, Mr. Hill.
Well, federal law says a lot that you have to obey. Will you just say first?
Mr. Hill, go and take a seat. Mr. Hill, take a seat, please. Mr. Hill?
That's the problem. This is the problem right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
No, I'm not finna, I'm saying thank you, Mr. President. I was telling you, thank you for following the guidelines and rules.
Mr. Pan, go ahead.
Thank you. We can't downsize. And matter of fact, if you go read, you will see that they are adding service. Because they will still be providing the Mogo service plus bus service. So when we come down here and add confusion to that, that creates problems. All we have to do is state the truth where it's moments that you do do that. And I value that. But you don't have to add confusion to create points. Just state the truth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over. Sixty-four zero four seven and sixty-four zero four eight are considering modifications to a previously approved planning approval for a property located at thirty-six ten and thirty-seven twenty Michael Boulevard and considering the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at thirty-six ten and thirty-seven twenty Michael Boulevard.
So moved.
Second?
Proper move in second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
C I P resolutions held over, zero eight eleven sixty.
We got, you got to call up fifty-two zero four six.
Fifty-two zero four six. Adopt chapter fifty-two, real property maintenance and enforcement, article eight, vacant structure registry for Henry Aaron Loop.
Move delay over one week.
Second?
Proper move in second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over one week.
C I P resolutions held over, zero eight eleven sixty-one, approve purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for a streetlight poles on St. Louis Street.
So moved.
Second?
Proper move in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over, zero one eleven twenty. Authorized revised solid waste disposal authority landfill accounting agreement. Twenty-one eleven, oh, I'll take that, I'll take that separate. Or do I need to take it all together?
We need to take it separate.
Take it separate, okay. Zero one eleven sixty-two authorized.
That one needs to be separate as well.
Oh, this one, okay.
I know it doesn't. Sorry.
Okay, zero one eleven sixty-two authorized amended loan agreement with James W. Buffett Declaration of Trust nineteen ninety. Zero one eleven sixty-three authorized easement agreement with one ninety-five LLC for private road in Logan cottages. Zero eight eleven sixty-six approve purchase order to Southern Emergency and Rescue Vehicle Sales for ambulance. And then I'll take the next one separate.
You don't, you don't.
I'll take those separate.
You don't want to.
Do you want to, we need to take.
Zero nine eleven seventy?
Okay, zero nine eleven seventy authorized amendments, reallocations, appropriations and transfers to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five general fund budget for port security grant funds.
So moved.
Second?
Proper move in second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Okay. Twenty-one eleven forty-nine authorized contract with Port City Transit for services to operate city's transit system.
So moved.
Second?
Proper move in second, in a discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Woods?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendment that was provided to us addressing one point two, point one, three point one, bit point B, one point one, point three, C.
Second?
Proper move in second, in the discussion on amendment.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pan?
I just want to commend the administration and VIA for my recommendations with these amendments. I really appreciate that taking the time to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion on an amendment.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification, I may have misheard this. On the last amendment, that would be four point one, point three, C. I believe it was stated one point one, point three, C. He's right.
All right, so we need to go back and re-saying that?
No, just accept the.
Just clarification, it'd be four point one, point three, C.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice?
Since we're in the amendment phase, Mr. Collins, could you just briefly mention what each of those amendments is?
Yes.
You don't have to read the entire thing, but just what they, what they are.
Certainly. One point two, point one references the city council's desire and the city's desire and VIA's desire for that matter to make sure they operate in a cost-saving manner. Obviously, this, this is going to come back to the city council at some point through a new year. We want to make sure that we've done everything we can to improve our cost savings without diminishing any services. And that's what that amendment substantially represents. Three, three point one, point B relates to the length of service for this contract. You may recall that it was initially described as a five plus five. This is a three, one, one and five, meaning it's a three-year contract, renewable for one, renewable for one again, and then renewable for five. If, at that time, all parties agree that would extend it for the fifth year or for the five year. And the last four point one, point three, C is specific to making sure that for the transition of employees, that all employees, absent of management, all service employees will be transferred over to VIA Transportation. And it encompasses all of the opportunities to do that, not just an op, not an opportunity, but encompasses all of them to be brought over pending all the standard customary reviews that you have.
And just as, as a follow-up to make sure everyone understands that the first nine months of the contract, everything will continue operating as far as routes go as they are now. There, there will be no changes in that part of this, this move.
That is correct. The first nine months of the contract, the services are what they are, just as Wave operates today. During those nine months, there'll be a series of public hearings, reviews to make sure that if there are any changes proposed by the council, VIA or the public that those are adhered to. We also have in the fiscal year twenty-six budget, two hundred thousand dollars for match money for the Mogo system to make sure that Mogo works in concert with Wave Transit as we know it today throughout those nine months. So at the end of that time, we can consider what can take place as far as all of the mergers and all the services. But during the nine months, there are no changes.
And, and I think that's an important point to remember because we as council members, and I know you all in the administration, hear from people all of the time about issues that they see that can be fixed, need to be fixed. We hear about shelters and more bus stops and, and maybe some areas where we need to provide better bus stops or more areas for bus stops. So that, that can all be taken care of in this interim period as we go forward to the full transition.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And we are also discussing internally, what can we do to improve the stops as we know them today? Obviously, we can't cover each one, but activities we can undertake until, through we get, until we get through the nine months to make sure we can improve those to the extent we can. They may not be permanent, but there will be enough to at least satisfy some of the requests until we understand what the permanent transit system will look like.
Right, I think we had referred to some of those as in the interim to try to do some things that have been needed to be done. If we could take care of some of those during the interim, I think that would really help a lot of these issues.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Another discussion on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, another discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Ron?
I want to thank Councilwoman Gregory and Councilmember Josh Woods for their effort in this. They, they've been working with, I think amongst like a steering committee for some time on this issue. And this is a very complex issue that I've learned a tremendous amount about throughout this process. And I don't think we as a city have as good a handle on public transportation as maybe we could or should. Because it is such a complex issue with so many sort of tentacles that go out and affect everybody's ordinary lives. I think the idea of bringing in an organization like VIA is, is just to bring in a, a subject matter expert that knows how to operate efficiently and they have the proven track record of doing it. And they have additional technology that we can leverage. They, they just know how public transit systems work. And our goal, I think, within the first nine-month period is for them to continue to operate as Wave is operating now. And if there are some efficiencies that can be found along the way, they'll certainly identify those and maybe make some minor modifications. But the out, at the end of the nine-month period, our expectation as a city is that VIA is going to come back to us with a clear path forward to increase the ridership, make it more convenient for the people that are out there using the services, these services, and to just be more effective at what we're doing, keeping the goal in mind of being efficient at operating a public transit system. We just amended this to also include a reduction, some real effort for them to try to be more efficient at what we're doing and then passing on some additional savings to the taxpayers of the city of Mobile. And, and I think they're going to be a good partner. We're counting on y'all to do a good job. We appreciate y'all being here. I know you have a proven record of doing it, but we want to be that shining example. When you go sell yourself to another city, we're showing up and your request for proposal has this great success. So I look forward to working with y'all, looking to see what you can do for all of our citizens here in Mobile. That's it, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Woods?
I just want to also thank real quick and not, not to belate or, or echo what Councilman Reynolds said, but I do want to say thank you to Jacob Scott and Joe and Ms. Shaw as well. Thank y'all for the work that you've done over the, over the past really few months, from, from seeking out proposals to, to working, working from. from seeking out proposals to working, working from a VIA standpoint as well. So thank y'all for that. And you know, the real thing as far as taxpayer dollar is concerned, you know, there's a not to exceed number in the budget, and you know, that's, to me, that's the real, a real win for the city is, you know, we're not going to be having invoices and payments going, coming out just to cover, cover costs, and not to exceed number, I think, is very important in this contract. So thank you again for everybody that had a part, and thanks for walking, walking us through the steps to get to where we are today. Thank you.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
09-1169 consider adoption of the 2025-2026 general fund and capital improvement fund budgets.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daze.
I'd like to move that we amend the budget that was submitted to us by decreasing transfers out to grants from $28,750 to $0. Decrease the visit Mobile allocation by $219,658 from $4,914,000 to $4,694,342. Increase operational expenses in the permitting division by $17,800. Increase operational expenses in the planning and zoning division by $37,350. And increase personnel expense in the municipal enforcement division by $193,800. All of these amendments are budget neutral.
Second. Properly moving second on amendment, in the discussion on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Another discussion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just for record purposes, each amendment will be numbered, so it'll be amendment one, two, three, four, five.
Okay. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Budget passed.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. President.
If I could.
Mr. Daze.
I would just like to thank the city council for moving forward on this budget. As most people know, we have a mandated deadline of September 20th for the city council to approve the budget that is submitted to us on August 2nd by the administration. We had a full, complete, open process, including a public hearing last week, and anyone that wanted to could have talked about it again today. So I think it's been a very transparent process. I appreciate the city council working with Director Collins and the rest of the administration to go ahead and get this budget passed on time. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Collins, and also thank you also, Mr. Daze. Madam Clerk.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 03-1180 through 46-1207.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
03-1180, 03-1181. Reappoint Hunter Witten to the Citizens Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Reappoint Jessica Fairley, P. Ann Forbes, and John Ruzick to the Mobile Historic Development Commission. 40-1182, 1183, 1184, and 1185 are declaring structures at 1109 Adam Street, 313 Calhoun Street, 1205 Gent Street, 1966 Harles Mill Road, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 40-1186, 1187, and 1188 are fixing the cost, are fixing the cost for securing and fixing cost for demolition of structures at 33 East I-65 Service Road South, 1720 Northview Drive, 1220 Satchel Street. 46-1189 and 46-1190 honorarily renaming Collins Avenue to Honorary Douglas and Mary F. Banks Way. Honorarily rename a portion of Esau Avenue to Honorary James Pettaway Avenue. 60-1191 approval of water special bonus to the firefighter of the month. 46-1207 honorarily rename the intersection of Jones Avenue and Carlton Avenue to Honorary Woodrow and Nettie Curtis Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced. 21-1192.
By council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time. 08-1193 through 37-1204.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions. 08-1193, 1194, 1195, 1196, 1197, 1198, 1199, and 09-1201.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk.
08-1193 approved purchase order to Adelty Ports and Maritime SL for installation of security cameras. 08-1194 approved purchase order to Electronic Supply Company for surveillance camera, system repair, parts and supplies. 08-1195 approved purchase order to emergency equipment professional for engine overhaul for fire pumper truck. 08-1196 approved purchase order to Moran Architecture for design, bid, and build professional services for Cooper Riverside Park restroom enhancements. 08-1197 approved purchase order to ransom cleaning services for power washing of cruise terminal. 08-1198 approved purchase order to technical and scientific application for 12 laptop computers. 08-1199 approved purchase order to technical and scientific application for desktop computer. 09-1201 transfer funds from Langen Park dredging for the Three Mile Creek watershed restoration project to G-12 MCWAT for the Three Mile Creek watershed restoration.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Vice President.
On 09-1201, I am very happy to be doing this. The resolution is to transfer some funds for the Langen Park dredging project. It is just to make the rest of the contract whole, and we heard some good news this morning. So we'll be announcing something hopefully soon as dredging gets ready to start at Langen Park. Thank you.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings. 41-1205 call for public hearing to consider the proposed conditional use permit for property located at 2316 Hillwood Drive West, scheduled October 21st. 41-1206 call for public hearing to reconsider the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 550 Providence Park Drive East, scheduled October 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements. The city council meeting scheduled for next week, Tuesday, will be held on Wednesday, September 24th.
District five, Councilman Daze.
No announcements.
District one, Councilman Penn.
No announcements.
District two, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements.
District four, Councilman Reynolds.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. On Tuesday of next week, there's going to be an election, and every citizen who lives in this city who's registered to vote has a duty to go out and vote. Can't take it for granted. You have to go vote. It doesn't take long. It's an easy process, and the implications of this election are tremendous. So I hope that everyone who can vote will get out and vote on Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District six, Councilman Woods.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you. Just want to make the announcement that this Thursday, September 18th, at 5:30 at Oak Park Church, we're having a community, District six community meeting. So I hope to have a good turnout, hope everyone attends and comes out. Just to echo on what Councilmember Reynolds said, in the city of Mobile, we roughly have 152,000 registered voters. The last election that we had coming out, that came out in the city, 41,481 people came out and voted. In District six, we have a population of 29,000, roughly 23,000 voting population, and out